Good morning. Today is Monday, February 19th, and I call the County Council. The Sheriff will do the favor this morning in doing the cases, so please stand in the way for me.
Val, I would be flattered to come to you humbly with thanks for everything that you provide for us, Lord. And we just ask to be with each of these leaders today as they make their decisions without a paper accounting. We just ask to be with all the departmental like officials as well as they go through their jobs each and every day. Keep them safe, help them make the right decisions that best fit your agenda, Lord, and not our own agenda. We just ask to be with all the first responders, all of our veterans, fighting every day to keep our country free and be able to come in here and do exactly what we're doing right now. Praying, we just thank you and give you all the praise and all that's in there since morning.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies and gentlemen, the agenda is the recognition of amendments from January 28th, 2019 and January 29th, 2019. So we're going to announce budget amendments to consider an act upon the approved budget amendments for the 2018, 2019. Here.
But some move to the 320, she put her, not knowing that the 320 is an awful. So, but I took about to judge hand, he did not have, so I'm just asking for us to replace some of that.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendments as presented.
Go ahead.
And a motion, second, on the favor of which?
Just to note, y'all noticed that when I say raise your hand, you always raise your right hand. So I just go back, when you say raise your right hand, it's just what I do. Got you? Okay. Number three, vouchers to consider an act upon approval of the primary voucher. Processed by the county arbiters office for the period of January 23rd, 2019, through February 6th, 2021. Check numbers 1-842-63, 3-184476, number transfers 1192, 31199, and a amount of $1,175,730, 836.
Move and say, back, action, session.
Second for discussion. I have two questions, Judge, if I may. Page 7 of 21, check number 1-84339, contact in the amount of $1,562.50 program income vigor new IT. I'm just not sure what that is.
Contacts are, they go off field of automation. So, they had actually been out from, they have opened PGO kind of from December up until about three weeks ago. And they asked that we put up PGO, what they were doing is coming and working, technical bugs out of our field of automation system, same thing, sequence of operation with our childrens, and just how that whole system works. So we could call Chris, the technician, he could come down and work on it. We wouldn't pay right then, we just had to keep a log, we all knew what that was.
Okay, thank you. The second question, I'm not sure if it's along the same lines, but page 8 of 21, check number 1-84352, towards the bottom, it's quite a few expenditures for diversified integrated system at the detention center, I'm not sure if that's a closeout of the LEC?
That, what that is... Sorry, Donna, like she said, like I say, I don't think she did that.
And maybe, Carrie, you know what that is. Tech labor at facility, there's about four or five levels. That's where I have my IT.
That's our control room. We have to pay somebody to come out and repair it, unless it was repaired or what.
Yeah, that's wrong. That, we didn't do that.
Okay.
It's either, it's either come system from the control room into each one of the parts.
And it's not under a warranty, it's a new repair already?
This is in the jail.
Oh, in the jail, I'm sorry, versus the LEC, okay.
Please do. I got you very much, Josh, and second, all the favors, which you can?
Right.
Insurance report to recognize the insurance fund. Is there anything you want to talk about?
Well, there's nothing unusual in the way of things on the report, but I did just want to draw your attention to two entries on January the 23rd, and it just looks a little funny. That was the transfer for the contingency that the Commissioners' Court approved on the Central Kent. But when it was transferred, there was an error in the way it was transferred, and so we had to do the correction. So that's what the two entries on the 23rd are.
Thank you. Anything else? So, number five, district court's building, consider an act upon all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing notification of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation and the adoption of the purpose to take it there too, to further construction and including of the court's building on the Clark County County Department of Public Safety. That boundaries the southeast seventh and eighth, south, south the sixth avenue to the north, no more to the west, and South Pier Street to the east, and demolition of the existing Clark County Court's building located in the Bible Valley, South Florida, Texas, longest sentence ever. Mr. Freeman, would you like to step up?
Good morning, good day, good ventures. My name is Andrew Freeman with Samco Capital Markets. The item for you this morning is a notice of intention resolution, which some of you may remember from 2016, is part of the process to issue certificates of obligation. So your adoption of this resolution this morning, we will start the clock, so to speak, on a ad in the paper record notifying citizens of this project, describing the project and describing the financing for the project and amount not to exceed for the size of the borrow. So we can borrow up to $54 million, if we borrow less, we cannot borrow more than. After that, publication is run 30 days, then we have the ability to then sell those securities into the market. So based on that timetable, assuming everything goes smoothly from here, we would be in the market March 25th, have an interest rate for the court activating that thing, or later, if it ends late, on March 25th, funds would be delivered on April 16th, for you to begin spending on the project itself. I believe you've all seen from this good analysis that we worked with her on to structure this, assuming some very moderate growth in the short term and very minimal growth in the long term as we look at how we'll have to structure the tax rate going forward. The expectation is to be able to keep this INS portion of the tax rate below nickel. One of the assumptions that we made here, aside from a very conservative growth rate, is a very high interest rate. We ran numbers for this 30-year borrowing at four and a quarter percent. Today's market is closer to three and a quarter, three and a half percent. Bond market generally has worked in our favor over the last few months as interest rates have come down considerably. So we certainly hope that interest rates remain low, but we won't be able to lock in those interest rates until a point that obviously things can change and moments notice that markets can rise. But we think that if you take a conservative approach here, that we would at the very least hit this benchmark. I'm happy to add any other number, if it may be helpful, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have regarding the COs.
When did you say the funding would be?
We will have, we will have money in the bank on April 16th.
So could you walk us through, if you don't mind, the grid at the bottom? At a high level, seeing the current debt service expire 2036, which I think is the REOs that we took out. Here is the debt service that's on there, well, either that or the LEC, the LEC that's finishing out. So that'll be until 2036. And then, so Aiden? Well, let me, you walk us through that and then I'll wait.
Absolutely. So this is what we call a tax rate impact analysis. It begins from left to right. You can see the fiscal year running down to the fourth column one. And then we have our projected tax assessed values. It's based on what our historical values have been, and then we put a growth rate assumption in there. You can see at the top of the page, closer to the top of the page above that grid, we're assuming a two and a half percent rate of growth in 2020, dropping to two percent in 2021, one and a half percent in 2022, and in 2023 and thereafter, we're assuming that our assessed value grew one percent. And so that's how you arrive at this projected taxable value. Our current debt service is, as you said, the 2016 COs for the LEC, as well as the tax notes that we sold two years ago. We then generate what our INS tax rate is based on what our currently outstanding debt service is, and then we look at how we're layering in this $54 million. This $54 million is amortized over 30 years. We then add that to our already outstanding debt service to come up with what we believe is a reasonable expectation of what our INS tax rate will be in the coming years, based on those assumptions, which you see in column seven, that new required INS tax rate. Then we have to consider other funds that are available to help buy down that tax rate. And so we've identified excess INS fund monies, INS fund balance that builds up over time. By law, it can only be used to pay for debt service. So you can't reallocate those excess monies to general fund operations or anything else. It has to be someone, that's what we're sort of looking at, using that over time to help mitigate the INS portion of the tax rate. And there's also some general fund monies that the county has identified to use towards this project that can help mitigate the tax rate. And then you can get over to column 11, again, that adjusted INS tax rate that you see we're roughly keeping to a nickel.
Okay, thank you.
It's a lot of numbers, but I'm happy to dig into it more. Did you have additional questions?
Well, I have some more questions, though I'm not, as it relates to the committee judge, but I'll wait.
Something to motion?
Well, if I may, before we take a motion, then I didn't know if you were giving an update. So, a couple of things, just in terms of concern of where we sit today. So from a public perspective, and I am not on this committee, so this is out of the way that I'm speaking from. I, even as a voting member of this court, have nothing more than this document and the agenda item on November 26th saying we were going to reference HOK Architectural Services for conceptual design. So if we bring it back, we say we're no longer taking that to vote, we are going to take COs. And then the very next item is if this goes to public input for the Globe News Printing and all of the protocol. $54 million, more debt than we've ever taken out times two. And I will still continue to just highlight an area of concern from a public perception. We have not given any new content, any detail of what HOK has presented, other than some comments. And I definitely have taken time to go a tour and even only got halfway through the building. So I'm not a nay in terms of the work that needs to happen, but I am very much a nay in terms of the amount that we are taking out that would supersede this court. That still, from the other end, if you sit in the public, you have no new content other than one agenda item that said we were going to look at some professional services for a building. And even the full Citizens Committee has not been engaged that we have, I think there's a bit insulated and coming up. But really, when you engage the committee, it's one of the frustrating points on the other end is it's done before you're done, right? I mean, at some point, there are already parameters. $54 million is not an insignificant undertaking for this county. And if you sit on the other end, it's very easy to get frustrated.
First, what you don't understand, we're at the very beginning of this. So there's really not much we can tell, because there's not a lot we know. So I don't know what is what you're asking me, but I cannot just tell the world what we're going to do right now, because I don't know.
But that's, I think that's a little bit of the frightening part. We're getting ready to take $54 million out without at least some type of rendering, at least some type of...
We have a rendering, but it's not for public view yet, because we haven't seen it.
The Commissioners' Court hasn't seen it either. So I, as a voting member, here asking to vote, and I know nothing other than an agenda item from November 26th.
My question would be, why did, if it's such a, Lord, why was it the number one issue on our strategic plan? Could this be replaced?
Yeah, and my disagreement...
That was over a year's worth of work, and yet we know nothing about it? I think that's...
Yeah, my disagreement is with the approach and the amount that we are taking out. My disagreement is not with the need of that building, but it is nothing...
We're in baby steps, we're just starting this.
$54 million is not baby steps.
Where it's going to be, because we don't know.
So I'll give you an analogy. We're literally getting ready to go buy a $54 million house, and we have no idea what it will be.
Okay, it's seven stores, and it's got the district course, certain offices in there, and it's going to be really, really nice.
I can't explain that to you, Judge, Judge.
I can, I can, tell them to call me. I'll just explain.
Well, I think individually, and I'm speaking for my vote, I am not speaking for the members of this court. I'm speaking for my vote, $54 million.
I would be able to say, when we know more, we'll tell you more. I don't know anymore than that right now.
Can we speak to, can we speak to the comparative as in respect to remodeling versus complete overhaul of the system?
Yeah, there's a $2 million difference to build and to repair. Two million, that's it.
But see, that's an example of another artifact that might be nice to share.
It's new, we're still not going in.
Yep, I don't have any, no documentation other than comments.
I want to have it explained, Ted, can you help me out a little bit?
Well, we've, I've said in several meetings with the architects to review the cost figures rehabilitation of the existing building versus building immediately. And we've had input and nickels, of course. The architects have, I don't have it in front of me, have given us their cost estimates of the demolition of the old building and the construction of the new building, the clipping of the new building. We don't have a, we don't have a detailed bond item. We don't have that, it's kind of chicken and egg thing. We've got to make the decision whether we're going to do the project, and then we dive into the details. Everybody can spend a whole lot of money diving into the details. And so that's where we stand. There are other members that have sat on the committee that can add more if you like. But I did read the strategic plan of cover to cover. And we have, we have some problems with that building. Obviously, it's a great state of paper. So we're faced with a decision, we can, we can wait until something bad happens and deal with that.
No, I think we're past that. I feel like that was the motion before, the last session before. I feel like we're past that. I wouldn't disagree with that, Ted. I'm just calling out that from a public side of the perception, there is no content that has been provided. There was a November 26th agenda item that said we're going to look at an architect. It was under the amount that we had to go for a bid. Was the architect, fast forward, there's an agenda item to say, let's take out COs. Fast forward today, $54 million. And there's no content other than one agenda item. And I'm, and please don't take my comments, I obviously trust the committee, I trust the department heads. But if you sit on the other end, $54 million is very significant for this county.
Judge, you may want to speak to the issue in terms of time constraints.
Like I said, we're in baby steps. This is the first step we have to take. And then we have to do, we have to put this in the paper twice, okay? In 31 days, then 31 days. And then what's next after that? Here, after that, we do...
We'll actually sell. Sell, okay.
Price and sell of security. Your commitment this morning, authorizing of this intention, is not a commitment to move all the way through the process. It's just to start the legal steps. My experience is that we advise strictly on a financial basis, not whether a project is worth proceeding with or the optics of it. But this is a very common predicament to be in, where in many ways, in many cases, you have to have the funding in place in order to spend on the soft costs of the time and keep working through that process. So I've seen this many, many months where you're taking your bite at the apple, so to speak, and you have a lot to work through in the upcoming many months.
Yeah, the only thing I might call out that's a little different about this scenario is we do have a healthy fund balance for the soft costs to get started. So I understand what you're saying is a lot of times counties or municipalities will take this just so there's some dollars to move within the project to get it started. I think we have a fairly healthy balance, I feel like we're in that category, which is, again, why I'm calling out the timing of this. So, for what it's worth, I wanted to say my piece.
Lord, I appreciate your interest in the concern of transparency, sharing that. It looks like you're putting the court forward.
Well, when you go buy a house, don't you fund it? Don't you see if you have money first before you, okay? So we're doing it.
In that distinction?
So money's always there. It's the interest rate that goes with it, yeah?
Well, I think that any question that the building, just the replacement meters, you've taken two, a tour of two floors, where do you say?
Oh, yeah, and I would not disagree. And I didn't disagree with the Sheriff Admin project. I did disagree with it hitting over $20 million in debt, because I knew this was coming. So I'm not disagreeing with the need, but the amount, and us being good stewards and being very transparent, because this is the taxpayer dollars, and each one of us are held accountable for our vote. And we can't articulate $54 million, and I, as an elected member, can't articulate $54 million, I obviously have a concern with that.
I'm thinking back that the last architect was in the amount of like $65 million.
That was Architectus.
Right.
It was actually more than that, wasn't it?
Whatever, whatever it was, was quite a bit more than what we asked for in this kind of, so, $75 million compared to $54 million, a little bit of difference there. This project would be, needs to proceed, and we have to have a starting point, and this is the starting.
This is the starting.
The strongest concern, Commissioner, is it the cost factor or is it just the insurance of the transparency?
I would say, really, it goes hand in hand. So I think the debt is $54 million, but we know the project cost is higher than that, right? There's some reserves that'll be used. So I think it's, it's the cost, and obviously, we always have a hat on of being a good steward. And it's hard to articulate, if you feel like you are being that, you have no, no type of detail other than one agenda item in November. So I would say, to answer the question, it's hand in hand. It's the cost, as well as the transparency piece, because I always imagine sitting on the other end, which many of us are in different forums, and it is very hard to follow what's happening kind of on the other end of the dais here. So that is a very significant undertaking for our county. This amount of debt, we will probably not see again, certainly in our tenure, maybe by our lifetime, quite honestly. Yeah.
Unless they close our jail.
Just don't talk about that. Did you want to speak, Sheriff?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, of course.
Not to dispute what you're saying, I just wanted to throw this out, this is a citizen's crime, not the sheriff. You know, that's, what's happened, and I mean, you said there's no documentation, but there was at last meeting, and the point of the $20 million came out then, if there was a difference. Interviews were done constantly that day with the Jersey. So I think the public is aware of that. There's still, there may be somebody here amongst the voice of concern, I don't know. But the other part of that too, is that's why you are elected, is to make those hard decisions. And that's why we elected you, we, our Commissioners, and put you in the places to make those decisions. Yeah, it's not always fun to spend $54 million, but are you going to waste more money by leaving that building undone and waiting and having to repair it? I mean, I admit, I mean, my gosh, they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep that solid and moving done. And like I said, you've been through their intuitive. I've been sorry for the people that work over there, I don't work over there, that's what I'm sorry for. But the other part of that too is that building, not only do we have our employees working there, we're required to bring our citizens into that building and put them through that mess. And so those are the ones that I'm, that I'll speak out for today, is we're requiring them to come over there. The parking lots are full today, and like, they're just, we don't have the little parking units yet, but they're coming, you can tell. But, I mean, we'd all be parked in the parking garage, still have my stick there, thank you. But, I mean, that's, I mean, we're requiring those people, because today's the big day for jury trial in the jury pool. So, and it'll be the same way Wednesday. So, I mean, I understand your concerns, but I think there's, there is, the point there is that we have talked about it, and we had the description, y'all had that description on the cost in the last meeting. Is it a big public forum? You know, we did the same thing with the Sheriff's Office when we were going to do that. We had three meetings, and we didn't have one single person show up for a public meeting that was well advertised. Media showed up, and information was put out there, but not one person came in. Opposition, of course, supported either one. So, anyway, let's just move on to the next.
Sure, so two quick things I would call out. We were expecting a potential petition during the Sheriff's Admin. There was some comment that that vote happened, that it snowed that day or right before a holiday, and so there was comment, public comment, of the petition couldn't get done. So that's here nor there, right? But we did hear some rumblings in the public about maybe a petition would happen. And then the second piece is, I'm not disagreeing with the need. And I did not disagree with the need for the Sheriff Admin. I'm just calling out, as an elected official, as you said, we are also supposed to be calling out the gaps in transparency, and absolutely, I see this as a gap. And I would be remiss if I just stayed quiet and voted along with you, because obviously, that would make me more popular amongst this room. But the gap, absolutely, is what I'm calling out. We owe our taxpayers communication.
There is no gap, there is no gap. This is the first step. When we get this done, you will see the concept drawing. Everybody in this room will see it.
But it'll be done, Judge, just like you said.
I mean, it'll be done.
The vote is, the vote will be done. I mean...
So you're trying to hold off voting on this until you see the concept drawing?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that it would be nice if we had more information before this went out to the public.
I think, and I take all of the emphasis consideration, and I can appreciate your passion and certainly your, your respect for the move to our transparency. But I also know that it is what it is, and this has to be done for not only the safety issue, but as far as the growth and movement of this county, or what expectations are going to be in the near future. And I think it's followed under the umbrella of the cost projection that was originally stated. You know, and stating that, we sit on a perch that overlooks some things that are happening and going to happen that general public may not see like that, and may not, we may not be able to disclose about that. So I think we're in a position, and I think time will tell that the decision was, was activated.
My piece, thank you, Judge. Okay, I'll leave my question.
We've got to read this long.
You don't have to.
I'm moved to approve the order approving and authorizing a notification of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation.
I would second.
Oh, the dish of course, I'm sorry. I'll say.
I have a motion in the second, and you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sign this and get it to you, Carrie, is it, or you signed it?
Okay. And number six, resolution inviting the West Texas County Judges and Attorney Association to roll the 2021 Annual Meeting and have a vote.
to hold its twenty-twenty-one annual meeting in Amarillo to consider a long-term resolution inviting the West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association. Elder twenty-twenty-one Annual Conference in Amarillo. Is this the thing that we're doing this year?
No, I was just saying, go ahead. Dan Callan from CDC is here and, uh, favor approach to... Put in the twenty-twenty-one conference.
Judge Bruce, yeah, we haven't even had a chance to host yet. We're so, so much away that they're already so excited. They want us to bid, uh, go ahead and bring it back in two years. Uh, you've got, uh, Leon, who will be very hard, Mr. Church, on this, uh, event. Uh, we have a lot of things going at Pacific Center, at the MSC, and, and also at the, uh, stadium. And we're planning some of the things for twenty-twenty-one, uh, to do this, uh, to request the opportunity. Of course, again, it requires your work and support, so that's why we're here with this resolution.
When's the last time we had one before we're gonna have twenty-six?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, so we're gonna have two, we're gonna do it in two years. How do you do that?
So let's see if all will...
Unfortunately for all of you, we do most of the work. I hope, uh, Mr. Church will be pretty effective. We do a lot of the heavy lifting on this.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I make a motion that we approve the resolution inviting West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association to hold its twenty-twenty-one Annual Conference back in Amarillo.
Sorry.
Thank you, Brian, you're worth it.
Number seven, Treasurer, to recognize the completion of ten hours of investment education for tech, county investment, and academy, any great match again, so recognize. Number A I T server room to hear an update on the information technology server room.
Brandon? Brandon and Nick. Um, I went ahead and placed this on, Judge, just because of the, um, concern about the temperature in the server room. So I gave all the detail during the last meeting, but basically it's regulating the temperature. So what I'd like to do is keep this on as a placeholder just so we're all involved, um, so that that doesn't turn into a, a bigger issue.
Thanks.
Um, yes, please do.
Okay. As of right now, we have, we're, we're kinda painting. We're all just watching the I T room, making sure it doesn't get hot. So the fans, and Brandon tells us, hey, if the fans are working, they're not working, that kind of thing. In the meantime, I've contacted Stephen Lee with Tech Plan, uh, Plano. He did a lot of work. I didn't notice, but he's just kind of typing on the internet. He did a lot of work outside of LEC and he's gonna be here on the nineteenth. He'll have to be the eighteenth, however, anyway. He'll be here on the nineteenth. We haven't walked out of town yet. He's getting some pictures of some equipment. First, uh, free charge is gonna come out and do an assessment. He feels like he can do a lot of reconfiguring and kind of move his things around to make the I T room function.
Work, work better.
Work there. So, I like free, is the best part of these. I'm more than once asking, hey, are you gonna let me know what charge and, and, uh, what are we customers? You know, I didn't know we used to, anyway, so, I think, so we're gonna continue to watch it. Brandon has me sending it from my phone, so if anything goes wrong, I can text.
And it's called a, a heat, is it a heat load assessment? I'm trying to think of what it's called.
Heat load analysis, and then they also look at, you know, the placement of the racks to have just the actual equipment on it. And they look at our flooring design. They look at everything in that. So there really is, it, heat load assessment or analysis, that is the name, you know? Do we have to achieve on the cooling? Can we anticipate heat, you know, that kind of thing? And that, that's all they do. That's, that's what their company does. I, I think, I think they're gonna be there with it.
Okay. May I ask a question? Is, are any of the, are any of the server issues that we've been having, is that because of the heat change?
No, no, sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to blame it on that, but...
And why that's important too is because the redundancy equipment that needs to go to the LEC, um, is not brought online yet. The idea is to synchronize that, bring it up together, and then ship it over there. So there's a couple of pieces that are dependent on this heat load assessment. And luckily Lance, I think, is back, so we'll be able to use some of his expertise too in that room. I just want a quick update for the court.
Yeah, so we feel, we feel pretty confident that we're going to be able to lower that, we should, with, uh, appropriateness of, uh, those, uh, including, we will go.
Yes. So it says what it says and kind of go along with that.
Questions?
Not yet, no. Thank you.
Make a motion if you want. County Council, please, two. Go ahead and just do all of it. Please, two, please, three, and four. Um, review tier one partial attention ratio for power report. Thank you for the question. Y'all have any questions? Anything you want to say in the remarks? Hundred twelve burn bands to consider next fall reservation for the county of Austin County. Mr. Lake. And, well, Pat, you can lay a bit of the...
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have been steadily picking up in activity and, uh, Bolster County, the ground is looking at or putting on burn bands. Keep us getting in this period where we're last year, we're gonna try to be a little proactive. Weather service, extended outlook, uh, scheduled tomorrow. The extended outlook, keep telling us that we're gonna break this cycle, but it has to happen yet, so this is gonna be...
In the winter, it's forty today.
Yes, we're hitting, uh, red flag threshold pretty much two to three times a week.
What is our K P D V I index? I said that after.
I didn't pull it this morning, but we're, we're in the range where, um, because of some moisture, some humidity, the K P D I is a little lower than it should be. So we're, uh, we're looking at the, uh, increase in activity and the, uh, potential disaster threshold that we're looking at as far as putting on burn band. We're not necessarily paying attention to the K P D I right now.
I move that we, uh, sign an order for everything after fires in Texas for kind of day period today. Before that, we're maybe, well, we're gonna...
Motion, all in favor, Rachel? Five, six, seven. Brandon, would you please put that on the, on the website for me, please?
Yes. I was gonna ask if it, uh, how could we send to the partner, sure.
Okay, we can do that.
Sorry, you just said they did that.
Okay, thank you.
Same.
Thank you. Uh, number thirteen, Sheriff's T Cole profile report, review and recognize Sheriff's racial profile report for the year twenty-eighteen, valid for Texas Commission on Law and Order, and submitted to the Department of Architecture for support, percent of articles, two point one three one and two point one three four, Texas Department of Engineering. Do you need to speak to that, Sheriff, or just, just to be quick?
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that? Number fourteen, RFQ one one seven four dash one nine, Architectural Services Fire Station, number one. Consider next fall awarding replacement qualifications, number one one seven four dash one nine, Architectural Services Fire Station, number one, Mark Hills, Samantha Cooper. As the highest evaluated department, wants to come when you can, um, to play. You can add, you can add?
Yes.
And Chris? Yes, sir.
We're gonna, you know, we go ahead and approve the Mark Hills, Samantha Cooper, for the Department of Services for the fire station. They did or not? Yes, they did.
I have no problem with them. Anybody want to, anybody have any questions, y'all?
Just in terms of the expenses, um, will you walk us through that?
It's gonna cost more than the other. We're kind of at the same place where we are. Last time we came in here, we said we need a station and threw some money out there and found out it wasn't nearly enough. So this time, we're going through the proper steps. This is our first step in the process to, uh, get an architect to tell us what it's gonna cost. We don't have a design, we're not drawing this time. We're letting our...
And there will be no elevator?
No elevator. Just, no, we do want some moving sidewalks.
Oh, okay, that's all right. We need those. We have to have them.
He's kidding.
He's kidding. He's so cute.
Say that again.
He's lost, shut up.
So Chief, um, it talks about a ream, uh, it talks about the expenses on the backend, the fee proposal, the reimbursable expenses, and then initial services. The civil engineering, figure's twenty thousand. So will you help me follow how much this expense is?
Um, sure. The added expense is, we, we bought and removed some stuff that we felt that the county could take care of, could take care of, um putting in a storm shelter. Um we have an architectural firm, an engineering firm, so we extracted a lot of stuff out. Some of the other stuff, um they they had to include in there as well. Um we were able to negotiate a nine percent rather than a ten percent um fee. So we're bringing that down. It's an added cost that had to be added into there. So again, it was more more we were saving more money as a county, taking that one percent out and adding the other money back in.
Chris, you said my phone in front of me was really good. You had it in front of your face.
And I'm.
I'm saying this part particularly because she can't.
So Chris, that you're saying you negotiated ten percent of the construction cost down to nine percent, but there are other expenses that will now then come with that?
Yes.
So as we look at this recap, there is an estimate of eight thousand of reimbursable expenses. Looks like we're not limited to travel and those kind of things. And then it talks about a twenty thousand civil engineering service. And then it, as you go down, it also talks about a fee of administrative, contract administration fee of fifteen thousand. So my I guess my question is, what is the total amount? Because I understand the nine percent of the contract, but are we planning on adding in these other services?
Those other services have to be added.
Okay.
But not having to pay. I I wanted to pick the architectural firm first.
Okay.
And then have them come back and say it's going to be X amount of dollars where we can then at that point say, no, we decided not to do this and this to bring our costs down. Again, we have to we have to start somewhere.
Right.
Getting our technical firm first is.
I agree. As long as there's an opportunity to bring it back, but it because there's always a little bit of a dance when the percentage is based off the construction cost. I'm not saying they would do this, but obviously they have an incentive. The more expensive the project becomes, the higher their their cost share is.
Sure.
So as long as there's an opportunity for this this dance, if you will, um.
We have not, I mean, we're gonna have to come back to the Commissioners Court and say it's going to be X amount of dollars to get your your guys' approval on it.
And some opportunities of maybe of value engineering, will that be included in that?
It's all in the motion.
Okay.
I mean, it's just the first step. And like I said, we are gonna have to come back to to the court for.
Move we award the R F Q eleven seventy-nine dash nineteen Mark Gilson Cooper update for the uh Architectural Services Fire Station.
Sir.
Congratulations. We have a couple of people here. From them, thank you so much to get this passed. We'll keep that and still look forward for it.
Thank you.
For fifteen equipment purchases, constable one complete and four to consider, and also all purchases for following items, the watch guard, this stuff, H S D camera, bundle model number D I S E H T W I F P Z. There's no number at all. At the cost of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars each, those are budgeted on the front.
And this is pretty much the same camera system we came to everybody before we did budget last year. Uh it's body cam and a car camera. Uh we took a little bit of more time because we looked some cheaper items maybe to save some money, but they were cheaper for a reason. They're chunky. So uh it is what it is. This is the one that Department of Public Safety uses. Uh there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of agencies that use this camera system. It just seems to be the easiest, best thing out there.
When's the last time that we bought camera system?
Uh twenty for us was twenty, I wanna say it's the end of twenty thirteen, twenty twenty, end of the twenty thirteen, twenty twelve fiscal year on the first book office. I think it was twenty fourteen maybe. And the reason we had to get rid of those is cop sync was the camera system and the computer system. Well, we're cop sync. Had a bunch of CEOs go on parties and spending money like them tomorrow and went and threw bankruptcy. The computer system survived. Camera system did not. They they quit working. There's no parts. There's nothing that you can do to revive them. So that's why we went to do camera system and new body cam. It all combines together. So when you turn on your lights, everything comes on. It starts recording or when you hit the button, it all starts recording together.
Is there any particular reason why constable, you speak to?
I think she just didn't get hers in in time. Uh her and and Constable Jackson are in training in Austin. Constable Paul's sick and fixing to be on his way to California to tend the family business. So I get the job of speaking for the ones that are on the agenda. I know I know Constable two will be coming. It's just, like I said, it was already budgeted in our budget from last this last.
You'll talk to all of us.
We did.
The unit car is that six thousand one hundred and fifty per constable?
Per constable.
Okay, and that's in the budget here.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the watch guard system as presented to the court funds budgeted.
Sir.
Woman, I would you consider next fall following following items, maintenance facilities, supporting a testing peak, as custodian one, replacement for two blue and B C, at the river line, and collection apartment employment at Nicole, Noreen, Pacheco, this collection state pool, replacement for children's court, and in Rodden Bruce, present resignation of Sergio Cado as maintenance tech, a figure of four, and woman of Kevin Martin as maintenance tech, a replacement for nine and a half.
We approve.
We've hit just about every big thing, big project. We can have a risk assessment by the. We took two to go. He have, they went through our buildings with our technicians, went through every building, looked for any possible hazards, no problem. Furnished us a really good list of pictures of everything. Uh I printed one off and it's a to my end. And they got it. Took care of everything. Uh I only have one copy.
I have mine here because I have to respond to them by the trip February twenty eighth, so.
This is the completed.
Okay.
They 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 they've done.
Okay.
So uh what the only thing that's not completed, couldn't get checked off is things that I have to work or just, you know, fit. It's actually pretty good. A lot of the departments had things, you know, trip hazards, things like that. It's it's really just kind of our insurance out. I mean, we, you know, parties at the end of the day to keep everyone safe. So we, they they went around and took care of it. So.
We got a copy of the email and that's all.
You don't get a copy of the corrections?
I do because I have to turn that in. Like, so I have to send it out. If you have another one for yourself, it's. Do y'all want that to be made a record in the Commissioners Court?
Yes.
Does it need to be made a record? That we're gonna be made the corrections. You went to sleep, didn't you?
Yes, yeah, sure.
Does it need to be?
I don't I don't believe it.
Okay.
Nick, uh when you have time, um I'd like to go through that vision for the sheriff and uh. I don't know if anybody else can.
Well, you don't have to get a haircut because you just did.
I don't.
It looks really good.
I'll make one thing. Did did we finish up the L E C? There was one last.
We finished everything up. Uh Susan Larry came down. We did a about a three hour walk there. I was gonna say quick, but it was three hours. Uh nothing significant was found. What we're doing now is is they're furnishing a uh kind of a final project. This is what we stand. I went back through, we have about forty open warranties, some closed, some not, there's two. So we're kind of compiling a large list. We're gonna do one final warranty saying this is the statement of the L E C, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the warranty. So uh I guess the main issue out there right now, it could be a costly issue with the asphalt at the New Dominion's garage. There's there's some back and forth on that, whether or not it's gonna be the architect did and the builder do it, the department do it. And so just there's a back and forth on that. As of right now, it's just it's just discussion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Number eighteen, jail report, we have five hundred and thirty-three victims, eighty-four of those are females, nine are farm now. Eight eighty-five percent of families, three percent are missing. Ten. Are any county insurance on? No county insurance on? Who's in your session? Gina. Uh, okay. Uh Gina Adams, for next one. We have four links there. I cannot be here in some water. Are you going to be there? I'll be.